Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order, the Wakefield School Committee, on Tuesday, September 9th, 2025. As always, going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Let's get everyone to stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we will have the reading of the mission statement. The vision of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are confident, lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing a rich and challenging curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests. At this point, we're going to open up public comments. So any member of the public who's either on Zoom or is present in the audience who wishes to address the school committee on any matter, they do so. All right, seeing no one coming up here, we will close public comments. We'll move on to item five. We have a consent agenda, I believe.
Will the school committee approve the minutes of the August 26, 2025, school committee meeting and accept the minutes of the September 5, 2025, Student Services Subcommittee meeting?
Second.
Is there any discussion of the minutes? Okay, all right, we'll do a roll call vote. Motion, vote for approval? All right, unanimous. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is budget items.
Thank you, everyone. Tonight, you have the financial reports in front of you for July and August of 2025. As you can see, we haven't encumbered the salaries yet for the full school year. That will happen in September because we were still going through the hiring practice, and we are putting all of our staff into the payroll. So for the next report for September, you'll see a dramatic decrease in that salary line as we encumber all salaries from now until June. The other report to make note of is we got our grants we submitted, hopefully for approval. But as you see, between what we budgeted for in the budget process and the actual amounts that we were received from the federal and the state levels, we had a reduction of just over $60,000, primarily in the special ed IDEA grant. That had the largest decrease of over $49,000. So we're working with the special ed department about what that will really mean for the district. That primarily supports 29 paraprofessionals in the district. So I just wanted to highlight that. It's still going through in the final process, but those are the allocations that we've received from the federal and the state levels. And the last page is the revolving accounts. As you'll see, dramatic decrease over the past couple months. We're still waiting to find out what our circuit breaker is. Circuit breaker supports our out-of-district tuitions, and we're hoping that that is still funded at the level that it was last year, about 72%. So we're encumbering for the tuitions that we know we're going to have to pay out, but we haven't got that final number yet. So more to come on that. Any questions for July and August? Kevin?
Just Christine, real quick, for the special education grants that were different than what we had anticipated, what's that based on? Or how is that, is it a formula? Is it just inappropriate? Like, how does that get determined?
So what we budget for is what we were funded last year.
Yeah.
So we budget year over year, assuming everything's level funded. So what happens is what we get an allocation based on our criteria and based on the demographics of Wakefield, but it's also a funding formula that the federal and the state government, when they pass their budgets. So we were anticipating cuts, but we didn't really know how much until we got that allocation. So what happens is the state puts out, they have a GEMS financial system, so that's where we apply for our grants, but they tell us what our entitlement is. But like you said, it's based on demographics, based on our population and our needs, which haven't really changed.
Right.
But it shows you that the funding from the federal government has changed, has been reduced. Kevin?
Just to go along with Kevin's question, I don't know if you've talked with other, like, finance directors of other towns, is this something that's happening everywhere?
Yes.
Okay, so it's, okay.
Yes, they warned us when we were applying. They warned us that the entitlement amounts would be delayed, but we got them before the start of school, which was positive, which allowed us to apply for the grants. But we recognized that the special ed, which is our largest grant, of course, was reduced. The other were minor changes. Now, hopefully, what typically could happen is during the year, we could see an adjustment, right? We could see the federal, the state level, they could say, well, we've reallocated, we found some additional funding, and they'll give you an amendment. Now, I can't promise that. It's happened in the past, but maybe that will happen. And we'd probably see that probably in January.
Thank you.
You're welcome. But that's it for the financial reports, and then we had three payrolls in the month of August.
I think we have a motion.
Yes. Will the school committee approve payroll warrants number six, number eight, and number 10, as presented?
Second.
Motion has been seconded. We'll do a roll call vote. All those in favor? All right, unanimous?
And the last, we received two gifts that we need approval on. Think we have a motion for the gifts?
Yes. Will the school committee accept with gratitude the donation of gymnastic mats and handspring trainers valued at $1,500 from the YMCA of Metro North Gymnastics Center in Salgas, Massachusetts, and the donation of student school supplies valued at $500.39 from the Yakohama TWS?
Second.
Okay, motion has been seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, we'll do a roll call vote. All those in favor? And the vote is unanimous.
That's it for budget. Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. With the permission of the chair, I'd like to take the items out of order.
Of course.
I'd like to invite Mike Murphy and the captains to come up to give a fall sports update. Michael? You bring chairs.
Bring a bunch of chairs up here. I'll talk fast and get out of the way. Casey needs some notes. You're fine. Hi, everybody. Again, just wanted to come in, give a quick, you know, recap of the start to the fall season. Obviously, it's still very young. You know, just some highlights. Very quickly, we have, as of about whatever time it is, 7:05 tonight, we have 363 registered student athletes for this fall season. That's across 11 sports and across 19 teams, with a few of our programs having three teams with JV, JV2 slash freshman. So great numbers for us. Some of the things, and I'll let our athletes here talk in a few minutes, but some of the things that I'm excited about for this fall in terms of athletics, it actually started yesterday. I met with the majority, probably 95% of our captains for the entire school year. That's our winter and spring sports also, just to get everybody in the same room and kind of talk, you know, expectations, culture, what is it, where do we want this thing to go? And my big message to them was it's their program, right? I think, you know, my job is to put them in the best positions to be successful. So really hearing from them, kind of delivering a message, and then trying to, you know, figure it out what it is that they want out of, you know, high school athletics and where we can take this thing. With that, too, I'm going to be starting a junior group. They don't know this yet, so some juniors have been nominated, I guess, by their coaches, whether they're a captain already or not. But I think it's, you know, the idea behind that is, you know, the beginning of your junior year is really where you can start to take shape of, you know, as a high school student. So kind of getting, same thing, same, just conversation-based, you know, some team building stuff, but getting all of them in a room and just having those conversations. We'll probably do that, I don't know, once a month or so, so I can give you some feedback on how that went. With me tonight are girl soccer captains Molly Anderson and Stella Carlino, our football captains Miles Sanchez and Christian DeFlorio. And again, to speak, getting to know all of them, whether it's on the field or now off the field, I think we have a great group, these four especially, but really, all of our captains are exactly who we want in those leadership roles. Again, I told them yesterday, if I have any issues, I'm going straight to the source, and I'm going straight to them. And my door is always open for them, and hopefully, they come and stop by. And then this one big announcement, I guess, if you've seen it, and I can take you through kind of that process if you have any questions about it, but our Thanksgiving football game versus Melrose, we've been picked and selected to play at Fenway Park. That game's going to take place now on Tuesday, November 25th at 5:00 PM. So we'll be the first game of four that are taking place on Tuesday and Wednesday. You know, and just a little about that process. Short story was the first time I met the Melrose Athletic Director, he had mentioned this to me, that we were, our game kind of was close, and that was last year. But we weren't selected last year. Again, some things took place over the summer. Is this something that we would be interested in? Those conversations continued, and again, trying to get some feedback from everybody, school administration, most importantly, student athletes. Is this something that we would be interested in doing, knowing the tradition of Thanksgiving football and all of the things that come with that in Massachusetts? But it's just a, hopefully, a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. And again, these guys can speak more about that, but it's going to be a pretty cool community event. We'll get some free tickets, and then it's, everything goes through the Fenway Group and MLB app, and we have a logistics call coming up soon, so I'll have way more information in case you're interested. But that's about it. So if you have questions or concerns for me, I'm here to answer them. If you want to ask some direct questions or hear from our athletes, that'd be great, too.
Does anyone have any questions or comments?
For the soccer team, what are you guys most excited about with this season?
I know it's early, school's just started, but I assume you've been practicing for a little bit, sort of even before the start of school, right? So are you liking sort of what you're seeing in front of you with the team?
Yeah, we lost a lot of seniors last year, so it's obviously a hard adjustment, but I feel like our team's like really connected, and it's hopefully it's going to be a good year.
Yeah, I agree. I feel like we have a lot of good games coming up, so should get some ones for those. But yeah, everyone's looking really strong, so it's been a good start.
Who do you think's going to be the toughest opponent?
Well, we just played Arlington, which they were pretty tough.
Yeah.
But probably like Winchester.
Okay.
Or another big teams.
Cool. Hope you have a great season.
Thank you.
Someone else? Kevin?
Yeah, I think I saw online the information about the Fenway, and so I know there's a lot of excitement about it. And I noticed you smiled when he had mentioned it. So I'm kind of curious, your thoughts about having that opportunity? And, you know, it is a little different than historically playing on Thanksgiving, but just the amazing opportunity it will be. I don't know if you guys have any thoughts about that you want to share?
Yeah, it's just like a once-in-a-lifetime thing, like Mr. Murphy said. I mean, not many people can say that they got to play at Fenway Park for a football game, so just that, and bringing the tradition of Thanksgiving game, like bringing all the alumni down. I know a couple people have texted me, like, saying like it's a once-in-a-lifetime thing, like to play at Fenway, and that they wish they had the opportunity. And our goal is to be playing Fenway Park and then eight days later, playing at Gillette.
Yeah, I kind of, to add on to what he said, I just think it's an amazing opportunity, like especially as a senior, last time going out, I mean, not our last game, but second to last game. It's just an amazing experience, I think, and just kind of excited to share that with my teammates, my coaches, and just think about that for the rest of my life, honestly.
Definitely. Thank you very much, and good luck to it to all of you.
Thank you.
Look forward to cheering you on.
Someone else have any comments, questions?
Go ahead. You were going to say something?
No, no.
Yeah, if you have any games coming up that you'd like to invite faculty or staff to, we can get that invite out. Just got to let us know, and we'd love to hear from you on that. All right? Good luck with your upcoming contests.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to thank you guys for beating Graydon Lawrence. Mr., the Athletic Director, Graydon Lawrence is my coworker. So I heard a little bit last year, so I'm very glad that I get to call about your victory. Personally, I appreciate it. But good luck for the rest of the season.
Thank you.
Awesome. And lastly, too, just, anybody want to bring those up? We have some Middlesex League passes that our captains want to present for the school committee. Again, it'll get into any Middlesex League event, sporting-wise, home or on the road. Again, just a little something from our captain.
Thank you so much.
Hopefully, there's enough. If we need more, you let me know.
It's great. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Good night.
So next, we have, we're going to introduce the new teachers, but before I get started, I'd like to ask Liz if she would come up to the table? Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I don't want to put you on the spot list, but I have to do it, right?
Hi, everyone. This is you all.
And so Liz DuSett runs our induction program. So after you go through the process of being hired, being interviewed, getting the, you know, feedback that you've gotten the position, and you work through human resources and do all that you need to do, Liz is the next person that you meet. And I'm, and kind of, it's, I can't think of a better person to meet. So Liz runs our induction program. It's a two-day program. She puts together the agenda. She plans it collaboratively with the administrators and does just really such a thoughtful job. You know, they cover anything and everything that people need to know. So there's structured times, there's unstructured times, there's time that teachers get to spend in their schools, there's kind of safety training, there's quite a bit. This year, we have 16 new lists?
Fifteen to sixteen, yeah.
Yeah.
Depending on how you look at it, yeah.
Really low number for the size of our district, 15 new faculty. So our retention is really high. It's, I think, the highest in the Middlesex League. But do you want to say just a little bit about the induction program, Liz?
Yeah, I mean, it's pretty cut and dry. I mean, they come in, they, you know, get welcomed by us, of course. They get to meet each other. They get to learn about sort of what the process is going to look like. They get to match up with their mentor, which I think is amazing. We have such amazing veteran staff here. So they get to go to school, learn about their buildings from them, and then the following day, it's kind of curriculum-based, which is really fun, the second day. Just so, we try to make it so when the first day of school happens, they are feeling so comfortable, ready to go. But I really have to give the credit to the administrator, the administration. They do such an amazing job hiring. They nail it every year. And these 15, I know there's probably like a half a dozen behind me, two dozen, they're amazing. So I think it's the best gig Wakefield has to offer, because, you know, everyone's so happy to be, have a job, and it's the best place to be. Wakefield is the best place to be. And I hear from people within the first week, a lot of them, now the ones I haven't heard from are going to be a little pressured right now, but like, this is the best district. Thank you so much. You know, this is the best choice I ever made. And it's a big choice, right? Professionally, when you choose these jobs. So that is such a rewarding part of this position. So again, hats off to the administration. They do such a great job. It's a long process, right, hiring? So, so yeah, it's great. And it continues all year long. I bother them all year.
Any questions about the induction program for Liz?
Not really a question, just to thank you. Dr. Lyons has touched up many times in this role, and just want to thank you, you know, the opportunity, when these, when these new teachers come to the district, to have a veteran leader like yourself to kind of show them the way is priceless. So thank you.
Welcome. Thank you. Thanks. We will not miss this opportunity to invite you back. Every year we do this.
Look forward to it. Busy as we do.
Thank you so much, Liz. Much appreciated. Next, I'd like to invite up the elementary principals to introduce their new teachers.
Brian's leading attention.
TJ and I were worried about where we were going to sit.
Just the two of us.
Want me to go first?
Yeah, so.
So before you go, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Just so that everyone knows, I don't know if you, off camera, you know, they invited Brian Schmidt to come up. Brian says, I don't have any new teachers, right? And so, nor does Tiffany. So go ahead, please.
They're here to support us, though. So the Doll Bear School welcomed two brand-new teachers to our school district, Hannah Wall and Kelsey Callahan. Can you dance a little bit? So this is Hannah. Hannah comes to us, she's been a third-grade teacher, most recently at St. Patrick's School. She got her degree at Merrimack College. Hannah's been a tremendous addition to our, to our school and to our Wakefield community. One of the things that was really interesting in her interview process is the curriculum she's working with at St. Pat's is Witten Wisdom, which is very similar to the curriculum that we use EL. So that was, you know, a very attractive kind of piece, and bring, onboarding her, because we knew there would be a connection and, you know, not so much of a learning curve to, with regards to ELA instruction, which was fantastic. And then Kelsey Callahan was a first-grade teacher in North Andover. You know, we stole her from North Andover. She's also a graduate of Merrimack College. And something interesting with Kelsey, she's actually a Wakefield resident and a Wakefield Memorial High School grad. In fact, she went to the Doll Bear School. So it's a homecoming for her, which is fantastic. And Doug, talk about the retention, the ability for us to kind of attract high-quality candidates as well as candidates that have a connection to our school community is so wonderful, that, you know, people that have gone through our school system want to come back, give back to the next generation of students. So welcome Hannah and Kelsey.
Good job, TJ. Should have went first. All right.
We'll clap for you, too.
Thanks. Appreciate it. So I'm really excited tonight to get to welcome or introduce an assistant principal and then three teachers that we've been so lucky to hire. So I'll start with Marguerite Augen-Brown. Marguerite, probably known to everybody here on this committee, Marguerite served as the STEM coordinator most recently. She also filled in as the interim assistant principal at the Woodville over the past winter and spring. We were very fortunate to have somebody in that role that could really step in and just do the work. And she was already so connected with teachers and students and just families. And it was just really a seamless transition. When the kind of opportunity came up for it to be full-time, we had, you know, a discussion about it. She thought about it and ultimately made a very good decision in deciding to join us full-time as the assistant principal. Marguerite and I, our time actually goes way back. My first job as a head of school was in Lawrence, and Marguerite was one of the teachers at that school. So we've known each other for a while, and I'm really excited to work with Marguerite this year and hopefully for many years to come. So welcome, Marguerite. We have two teachers in-house tonight, so we have Alana Galatas and we have Caitlin and Carnasio. Alana is our new stack teacher. She comes to us from Woburn Public Schools. She is someone who was connected to the Woodville School. We knew her in a couple of different roles, but ultimately, she decided to kind of take her talents to Woburn. We saw the talents, we brought her back to the Woodville School. So we're very excited to have her as our stack teacher in our therapeutic program. So welcome, Alana. And then Caitlin, Caitlin comes to us, and she's our new fourth-grade teacher. She comes from Stonehill College. This is her first job as a teacher, obviously not her first job ever. But she's just a very exciting hire for us, somebody that's really excited to come in and make a difference, already very connected with the community, really putting in the time. Kids are already smiling. I always ask, right, like, how's the new teacher? How's she doing, right? And they're, oh, she's doing so good. She's great, Matt. She's awesome. And we're really excited to have her. So welcome Caitlin and welcome Alana. And then we have one other teacher that could not be here tonight, Giulia Fiorentino. She is our new Strive teacher, which is a sub-separate program that is new to the Woodville School. And she comes to us from Marblehead Public Schools. Really excited, we had a chance to get in there. These are, is a new population of students to us, so we've had a chance to get into that classroom, see her in action, just really happy all the time, really supportive of kids, and really looking for kind of the best outcomes possible. So very excited with the kind of team of people we've brought in, from Marguerite, right through our teaching staff and through our paraprofessionals as well. So it's been a great start to the school year, and we're excited to see kind of, you know, the weeks to come, and hopefully, it's a good year, start to finish.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Much appreciated. Next, I'd like to invite Meg and Amy to come up.
Hello. You know, we each have like a million, so we'll. I'll start. Hi. Yeah, we're always excited to welcome new folks at the Galvin. We have seven this year, which sounds like a large number, but is smaller than we've had in years past. And it's kind of representative of the size of our staff in general. We have two of our new staff members here. And this is, I think, the third year in a row that this school committee meeting falls in the same week as our back-to-school night. So some people weren't able to make both commitments happen. Oh, we have a bunch of them on. Oh, we have a bunch of them on the screen, too. Hi. All right. So here in the studio, Liz, a fuel stand, and Katie. We have Katie Warden, who is one of two new language-based teachers at the Galvin. Katie is serving the fifth grade. She comes to us from lots of great experience, specifically with the language-based population, most recently at the Landmark School, which is a school we work closely with. So we're really excited to have her. She's already, she already fits right in with her team and with the various folks in our special education department. So Katie has been awesome already and we're glad to have her. We also have Liz Curran, who is not a new face, I think, to anyone. One of the most exciting things, I think, is when you're able to hire someone from within, somebody who's really grown within the school. And so Liz has been a paraprofessional with us for many years. Before that, she worked in various school districts, particularly around literacy. And so brings a lot of, a lot of experience that has been really relevant in her role as a parent and now in her role as our fifth-grade teacher. She's teaching math and science this year on Team K. So she has already, of course, had a great start to the year and we're excited to have her continue. We also have. Oh, you're standing through everyone else. Levia Bernhardt is a teacher who is continuing with us. She started in April. I look at Amy because she's at the high school and jumped over to the middle school at a time when we just, it was perfect timing for us. But she's amazing. And so she's starting her first full year as an eighth-grade math teacher. Prior to being at Wakefield High, she was a student at Bates College. Sharon Rosen is another language-based teacher who has joined us in the sixth grade. And she comes to us from Lawrence Public Schools and some time in Arlington. And like Katie, brings a wealth of expertise in that particular content area. So excited to have Sharon. Erin Murphy is another teacher who kind of grew within the Galvin. She was a long-term sub, whose circumstance led to kind of having an opening for a full-time position. And she was so outstanding that we were excited to welcome her full-time. So she's joining us as an ESL teacher. And Jack Leary is joining us as a civics teacher in the eighth grade. He was the candidate selected from 98 applicants. So we're really excited to have him. He comes to us from experience in Peabody and in West Newbury. And he is another one who's just kind of fit right in. Just seems like he's always been there. We're glad to have him. And finally, in chorus, we have Crystal Moran, who has an incredible range of experience as well. She was the associate director of choirs for the Boston Children's Chorus. She taught in Boston Public Schools. And in New Hampshire, I'm going to forget the district. But, so she has a range of experience and has done an incredible job in our music department. And that, those are our folks.
So we have four new teachers at the high school, really five. Meg and I go back and forth about teachers who go back and forth between our buildings. So she grabbed Levia, but we grabbed Kyle.
Sure did.
So Kyle Collins is a social studies teacher at the high school. He came from the Galvin. He'd been there for a number of years and was just looking to try a new level. And so we're really excited to welcome him to the high school. And then in person, we have Liz. So Liz Virgin, I'm sorry you have to stand up. It's teachers' hall. So Liz Virgin is a math teacher at the high school. She comes to us most recently from Lexington, having done a bunch of work there. What's really great about Liz is she's also moved to Wakefield. So she is a resident and she is also married to somebody who works in the Wakefield Public School. So she's really found a home in Wakefield. So welcome, Liz. And then on Zoom, we have a few more teachers. Josie Stapleton is at the bottom of your screen. Hi, Josie. So Josie is coming to us. This is her first full-time teaching position. She came to us having done her student teaching in Western Mass, finishing her degree. And so, yeah, we're really excited to have her on board. It's very different in the math hallway to have a brand-new teacher in the math hallway. So it's been fantastic to have Josie come share what she's been learning in her classes and kind of shape the dialogue in the math department a little differently. So welcome, Josie. And then in the top right, we have Brianna Alfes. Hey, Brianna. So Brianna comes to us most recently from teaching at Abbott Academy at Lawrence High School. Prior to that, she had experience teaching in charter schools. I have to mention that Brianna captured our attention. As a former English teacher, we asked all of them, you know, what they were, what they were reading. So what we would find on their bedside table and what was the book that they would want to read. And Brianna talked about Frankenstein very passionately, which was awesome and really captivated the committee. So we're really glad that Brianna is here. So welcome, Brianna. And then finally, we have one special educator who could not make it tonight. Nicole DeFonte could not jump onto Zoom because she has another job. But she is a special educator. She comes to us most recently, having been in Wilmington. Prior to that, she worked in Burlington. So she started as a paraprofessional in Burlington, then moved to a spent teacher in Wilmington. And now she's joining us as an MSN here. So we're excited to have her. So we can clap even though she's.
So thank you so much. I think we're going to transition to school improvement. And our new, for our new teachers, you don't have to stay. It's a good time to make a break.
You really don't have to stay.
Thank you so much for coming. We really appreciate it.
Are we going first?
Secondary's going first?
Mrs. Manzi, Mrs. Manzi's joke is ruined, so. That's all right. All right. Sorry, Mrs. Manzi. We're really not, because we go last all the time. So we're really not, sorry. We're just going to go first. Yeah, I know. It's like, this is so fun. So the Galvin and the high school work together, again, on our school improvement plan. So we're presenting them together. Goals one and two are very similar this year. I'm going to talk about goal one. Megan will talk about goal two. And then we'll each talk about goal three in our schools. So, so goal one for us is really, you know, we're kind of focusing in on standard two this year a little bit. We spent a lot of time at both the Galvin and the high school working on curriculum, right? And really spending time and effort making sure that our curriculum is aligned and that the resources that our teachers need are, you know, lined up with the curriculum maps. And so now, we feel like the next logical step of that.
Would you be kind enough to share what standard two is?
Sorry. So standard one, we're talking about curriculum. Standard two, we're really talking about instruction meeting the needs of all students. And so when we're thinking about meeting the needs of all students, so thinking about standard two as how we get the curriculum into the hands of kids so that they're understanding, comprehending, and digging into the curriculum, which is standard one. Sorry, thank you. So we're really thinking about supporting teachers to have instructional strategies that meet the wide array of learners in our schools. And I think that's something that we've been talking about for quite a few years and noticing that our population is becoming more diverse. Our learning needs from our students are becoming more diverse. So therefore, we need to think about instructional tools and strategies to meet those needs. So when we think about students' diverse social and academic needs, we're thinking about students who are, might be our multilingual learners or students who are accelerated learners, students who are, may have special education or students who have social and emotional needs. So we really, we kind of step this out in our action steps from professional development all the way down to classrooms. So working with curriculum coordinators who will be helping with the five to 12 professional development, zeroing in in each of the sessions on the needs of some of those learners and looking at those strategies, bringing in both outside experts in those areas and then having breakout times for departments to work together. So for example, if they're doing a session on meeting the needs of multilingual learners, having someone in and talking about the retail strategies that everybody's been trained in, but going a little deeper there, and then having time in their departments to kind of break that down and talk about what it looks like and then how they might implement it. To layer on that, to kind of support teachers, we're talking about curriculum instruction visits so that principals and curriculum coordinators would be able to go in and support teachers as they're implementing these new strategies, to give feedback, to see how it's going, to partner teachers up with one another. That goes into the third piece, to encourage cross-curricular or, and it really should say cross-curricular or inter-curricular observations so that if Megan is struggling with a strategy, I can maybe say, "You know what? One of your colleagues has really been able to do this strategy well. Why don't you go in and see Kara's classroom? And we'll do that together." So really, those three steps go right in a row. Finally, we're thinking about model classrooms where if, you know, we notice teachers who are really accelerating in these areas, asking them to open up their classrooms. Our department coordinators are excellent at that. Last year, we had several department coordinators at the high school who would, you know, shoot out a note, "I'm trying something new based on something we learned in PD. Come on in." So we're really trying to put that as a, as a goal to encourage more people to do that because teachers learn best from one another. So that's really the four action steps of standard one. Oh, sorry, goal one.
Okay. Goal two surrounds rich and challenging curriculum. And for us, this one, when we looked back at our presentation in the spring, it is really like the next step or deeper dive into those steps from last year. And so we're looking at the idea of having common assessments and then using those assessments to move practice, both kind of on the, on the big-picture level. So if we're talking about looking at already data and determining where students are struggling and where they're growing and how we're grouping them for different interventions. But then also zeroing in on just day-to-day classroom practice so that teachers are building their facility with gathering not just that formal data, but informal data as they're going through their instructional day and using that to fine-tune their instruction, to group students kind of in the moment and to think about next steps for their, for their next lessons. I think a couple of exciting resources that we have this year, one is the Open Architects platform, which gives us as administrators a lens into various data points and allows us to triangulate them in ways that it's just much faster and much more user-friendly than we've had in the past. And so being able to make decisions based on actual data versus, you know, trying to, trying to do our best with anecdotal data and then some pieces of hard data. And we're looking forward to the potential of bringing that to teacher teams in different ways and using that as a tool to help them with this, this particular goal area. For both of us, we're continuing the work on common assessments and making sure that those are accessible across PLCs and that those are the anchors that we're using to make sure that learning across the building is equitable.
Great. That's goal two. Should we go into goal three? Want to do questions about one and two? We good? We keep going?
Do you have any questions for goal one and two? I just said one. I just said one comment slash question. I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
For one thing, when I was reading this earlier today, one thing that I thought was really valuable was the cross-curricular observation, but really just the whole point. I think I've said this before, for years, but I think it really, you know, as a teacher, the best way to like get new, like, ideas, innovative ways to get stuff across is just to watch it. Like, you can go to a PD night and day, but if you actually see it happening, it's the best thing to do. So my question was, is it hard within the schedule to kind of like organize it to like be able to get teachers in other rooms?
No.
Or are you able to do that?
We're able to flex it. You know, luckily, our, some of our department leaders have helped out with that. So if a teacher wants to get coverage to go and see another classroom, we can provide that through a department leader so that they, you know, or an administrator so that they can go see that. Often, there's enough classes that they can go and see, you know, a colleague in one of the blocks just because we have the extra blocks at the high school. So it works out well. Yeah, so it's worked out well. And I think, we started it last year. We're going to continue it this year and try to support people more so that if there is a challenge with the schedule, being clear from the start of the school that we can provide that coverage so people can go in.
Great. Awesome.
Do you want to go talk about three?
Sure. All right. So goal three, we do sort of part ways, although we're under the same umbrella of individualized student learning. You've heard me talk for a few years now about our win block and that's where our focus continues to be. And I think I spoke a bit about this in the spring, but part of it is continuing strong practices that we've developed in our upper house. And then those practices are actually, we're about on Monday to launch them in our lower house as well. So taking some lessons learned from where there's been strong practice and applying that in the fifth and sixth grade as well. And then also, some of the lessons learned in fifth and sixth grade, applying those in seventh and eighth. But the operational model in the seventh and eighth just seemed to serve students better. So that's where our focus lies in terms of this year's intervention groupings. I think we continue to push, and it's kind of married to goal two, for the use of data in a really fine-tuned and thoughtful way. I was actually just in a math PLC today where the way they're grouping students for intervention is just, not that it wasn't thoughtful before, but it's so much more thoughtful in terms of what standard they're looking at. And looking at last year's MCAS data, oh, like, we want to be a little bit more narrow in our focus and we want to. And so the teacher's kind of taking their area of expertise and running with that for the first quarter and having a plan for when are we sitting down and looking at kind of outcomes for that particular standard. So it's exciting to see that practice developing in the various PLCs. And so our focus will continue to be in developing, developing those pieces. There was interest among the school committee when I spoke a little bit about our executive functioning pilot, which we're, we are piloting in the seventh and eighth grade through a program called Level Up. So Kate Hurstman is the school psychologist who's kind of overseeing that pilot. We're hoping for some, some good, good results that we can then kind of replicate across other grades, but we're starting, starting small with that. So happy to come report back on that if there's interest in that.
Great. And for the high school, for individualized student learning, we're really focusing on supporting students through the vision of the graduate. We spent a lot of time last year putting together the vision of the graduate. So we started the year getting the visual out. Really, so our goal this year is to sort of get this out into the hands of teachers, integrate it into classrooms, introduce it to the community even more it into classrooms, introduce it to the community even more so that there's a full-scale understanding of what the vision of the graduate is, what are we trying to do with it? And then how are we integrating it into really all aspects of the high school as much as possible? We started the year in our first two PD days, talking to teachers and departments about the vision of the graduate and asking them to really hone in on what areas that they felt were most accessible for their department. And so some of the departments are thinking about turning those into professional practice goals. Some of them are thinking about turning them into student learning goals, but really thinking about ways that they can make these natural connections to the vision of the graduate. We've gotten posters of them up all over the school, so kids are constantly seeing vision of a graduate and we're referring to it. We are going to have an advisory lesson in the fall. I don't remember the order of them, but some point in the fall, we're going to have an activity to really get kids to dig into the vision of the graduate and then really start thinking about how do we get it out into the larger community. When I hear Mike talking about, you know, conversations of leadership with our student athlete leaders, I mean, that is part of being, you know, inspired lifelong leaders and courageous problem solvers, right? So really integrating this language into everything that we're doing at the high school, that's really the goal for this year. I think Niask often talks about how schools take on a vision of graduate, they make great T-shirts and then nothing ever comes of it. And we put too much work in it to have it go away. So for us at the high school this year, that's really going to be, being a touch point to that, coming back to that a few times when we meet as a faculty and in departments to talk about how are we really making this vision come alive in the high school.
Anyone have any comments or questions? All right. Thank you very much. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Alex.
I usually don't, I usually just keep the hand down. So just, and I said I didn't have any questions for the first focus area, but it kind of bleeds into that, the third, individualized student learning. And within it, I think one of the action steps was the PD to deepen strategies right geared at, you know, supporting all students. Is there anything more specific about that, those particular strategies that, that you're going to do within PDs to deepen kind of how we, how we are able to support all students?
Yeah, I think the, the five-part PD series that the districts participating in, in five through 12, which is something that we've been part of the development of and that our curriculum coordinators are doing an awesome job of kind of putting all the details together for, include sessions on supporting multilingual learners. There's one on strategies related to the D cap, which is a document that all of our teachers are just getting really deep into last year and this year. So looking specifically at, at strategies that you can use day-to-day in the classroom there. There's a session on accelerating learning. It's not, it's not the title of the session, but yeah, I was going to say.
Challenging and moving students.
One of them has a very catchy title, but I forgot. Yes.
Yeah. There's one on challenging students and then there's another one on.
Differentiating.
Appropriately modifying assessments to meet grade level.
Yeah. So yeah, so I think we've taken out these big categories that teachers have told us, okay, these are areas where we could really use additional support and the design of which, which is probably the subject of another meeting, but is to have experts in that particular field do a full group kind of presentation and then folks to split out into their departments and apply that learning. So, so yeah, so there's, all of this is kind of tied together within the district's PD model.
We will. We're just finishing up the PD plan. We still have some last minute details to work out. Yeah, yeah. So definitely, we're, our goal is to release it out to all the staff on, oh, tomorrow. That was our goal.
I'll do tomorrow.
So we'll release that to all of you as well, so you can see the breakdown. But a really nice series focused on instructional strategies for K through four and, and five through 12. We're excited about it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, sorry. Melissa.
Just, just a follow-up. Do you find that having, working towards common assessments is making it easier to develop common differentiation strategies and individualized learning processes for different subgroups? Yeah, I think it has been a critical first step in just getting everyone on the same page and, and looking at the same content. I think like a very micro version of it is our math PLCs, they, they look at question by question on assessments and discuss how they, what, how they graded certain students' work and why, and so they can kind of norm around that. And I think that's a really fine-tuned example of just kind of how the idea of looking at a common set of work touches the day-to-day instructional work of teachers, but then also in the much bigger picture, it just helps us to understand at the school level kind of like what's happening instructionally and where our kids are and what adjustments need to be made. And I think within those conversations, I said, oh, with a student who, you know, might have this profile, I might try this with the question, which has been a really nice way to weave that, that sort of conversation into PLCs.
Right. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Aaron, we're going to bring, we're going to bring Aaron up next. Is that okay, guys? Yeah. So Aaron Manzi is our interim principal of Doyle Early Childhood, as you, as you all know. Just to, just to, to share the collaboration that goes into this, a lot of this work starts over the summer. We, at our last meeting, talked about our summer administrative meetings. Shannon Blacker, who is now our assistant director of special education, was the principal of Doyle and I know that Aaron and Shannon were able to work collaboratively on the development of school improvement plan and brought it by the staff. So thanks, Aaron.
Thanks so much. Yes, thank you so much for having me tonight. Like Kara said, I have been so fortunate to have Shannon Blacker along here with me during these first couple of weeks as I enter into the Doyle, which I have to start saying, start by saying, it is a wonderful place. With quoting Diane Brackett, one of the pairs there saying it's one of the, I think it's the happiest school in the district, honestly. It really is. They're amazing teachers, amazing staff overall, definitely the cutest kids in the district. It really is a great place to work and they've welcomed me so well. So it's really been a great start so far. But like Kara said, that Shannon has really been supporting me, you know, through this beginning part. And so it's been great that I've had a think partner when creating some of these goals. Shannon really has a, a deep understanding of where the Doyle is headed and what really the teachers have been working on for the past couple of years. So really her guidance has really helped me develop the goals for tonight. So really focusing on quality teaching, very similar to what Megan and what Amy said. And I think that what you're going to hear from the elementary teachers, really focusing on instructional practices in the classroom is really our focus for this year. At the, at the preschool level, focusing on instructional practices that support play and learning frameworks, which are new to me, I'm not going to lie. And honestly, I, I am a teacher nerd and I've dug really deep into these and really, I sit on the couch and Rick Mansy's like, what are you doing? And I'm like, I'm just reading more and more about the frameworks and how, what they look like in the classroom and how to support teachers and implementing those into the classroom. We're going to be hyper-focused on engagement and persistent, really teaching students to dig in, to keep with those tasks as they're learning and playing, right? It looks much different than, you know, Megan and Amy, but this is the developmental stage that they're at at this point. And really focusing on their engagement and persistence during center activities. Obviously, we're focused on instructional practices at all, you know, during all teaching and learning, but thinking about center activities is a time where teachers can step back, really observe students and observe how they're engaging in that activity. Eventually, our ILT will create a tracker, right, to really guide their instructional practices, guide where they can support students a little bit more. So during that, during the center activities would probably be the best focus area for us, talking about instructional practices. Focusing on challenging curriculum. The Doyle School went through a curriculum review cycle just this past year, which was, they had a great experience, we have a great ILT. So at this point right now, we have a really strong scope and sequence, an aligned scope and sequence that includes thematic units, rich thematic units with common literacy pieces from diverse voices, various genres. So we have the thematic units, but also aligning with targeted literacy instruction through Hegarty and through foundations. And I got to get into a classroom just yesterday into Katie Bossi's classroom, who is an amazing teacher. And you wouldn't believe the engagement with this, what are we talking about? Day four for our students. She was teaching that first lesson of Hegarty and foundations. It's multisensory, it's phonics-based, but students were completely engaged in learning the letter M, learning the letter A, the sounds that are associated with it. I know I get excited, but it's really, it's, it's wonderful watching her and teaching the students and how they react to her was really amazing. So this focusing on challenging curriculum, we have the foundation and now we're going to be implementing that. During our first ILT meeting, the teachers, through our ILT teachers, put the, all the resources together very neatly for the teachers so they really have easy access to those resources, they can grab and go. We, we're distributing some of them today, so they have those to implement into the classroom, right? There are 10 units altogether. So that was, I work on that. And then kind of, and then focusing on individual student learning, everything's individual at the Doyle. Really, it really is. I think that's what it makes it an amazing place. There are so many programs, so many support systems, people come, therapists and service people coming in and out all day long, really diving in and seeing how I can, how we can individually support students. It's an amazing place. So thinking about how we can support teachers in this area with the implementation of the new IEP just last year, Shannon and I felt that teachers still need support in what that IEP looks like. Thinking about giving them more PD opportunities, more collaboration time to enhance the process of evaluating students, especially the initial evaluation, thinking about how to determine eligibility. We're going to be digging deeper into the writing of the IEP process, accommodations, modifications, writing some annual goals, looking at the language we're using to describe present levels of performance for students. We have some, we have two great leader, leader teachers that have already given a little PD during our first, during our first meeting at the beginning of the school year. They're going to continue. One is our speech pathologist, one is another one of our teacher leaders, phenomenal. They really know our teachers, they know what they need to support them during that time. We also have Kelly Mertens coming in for three of our sessions. So I really feel it's a great, it's a great structure of a PD process to support teachers so they feel good about writing IPs, they feel good about supporting students in the classroom. And for the first week, I think that's pretty good.
If some of you aren't familiar with Kelly Mertens, she ran all of the PD for our special education staff last year. She's a special education consultant, Mertens Educational Consulting, I believe. But she, we got really, really strong feedback from her last year, so now she'll tailor her work to Doyle.
And she, and she's great, honestly. I was going back and forth with email with her and she said, let's just get on the phone, you know, and let's, let's talk about what your teachers need, what are you looking for for PD from me? How can I support you? So we had a great conversation just last week, which is really nice, which is really nice.
That will also be in the PD plan that we'll, we'll get out to.
So I went through all of mine. I didn't stop in between. Sorry to ask you any questions.
Like, well, it could be 10 minutes, everybody's like, who is this?
I know. I timed myself. I was under duh. I'd like to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments?
I just wanted to say like, I love hearing about the play-based, play-based learning and, and seeing the developmentally appropriate goals for the, the school improvement plan. It's a really nice job.
Yes, thank you. And again, that was with Shannon, honestly, just us having a really great conversation.
I was just going to say, like, so like play is learning at this, at this age. So the centers are, it's just as important as some of the stuff we see at the higher levels, but I just feel really lucky that you stepped into this role. I think sort of Shannon has, has sort of made a big sort of seat to sit in and I feel like you're going to fit that just perfectly. So that, thank you for stepping into the role and I'm excited to.
It is a big seat. She has done a phenomenal job at really just laying the groundwork at the, at the Doyle. Again, with the teachers that are there, the instruction that's happening, the support systems that are in place, it is a well-oiled machine. It really is. And everyone is there to support each other and help each other. It's, and they've welcomed me really well, so that's great. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. All right. I appreciate it. Again, Doyle is an amazing place. You heard Aaron talk about it, but I know you all know this, but all of our teachers at Doyle are dual-certified in special education and regular ed, right? It's often something that goes under the radar. So it's quite a special place. You'll be hearing more about Doyle and maybe seeing some of our, our friends from, from Doyle.
Fabulous.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up are our elementary principals.
And the, the elementary are all linked individually, but they're all working on common goals. You probably picked up on that.
All right. Thank you as always for having us. I think I like it better when we get to go first, but. Those are some tough acts to follow, but we'll do our best and we'll try to stay on time, Kara. But yeah, so I'll just explain kind of the thought process of our plan briefly here and then Tiffany, Matt and TJ will speak about each of our three goals. So over the summer, we, as Kara just mentioned, we worked on this really closely together with our curriculum coordinators and assistant principals. We gathered some feedback from teachers. We tried to build on our work last year and I think you heard some things, some common themes from our colleagues that you'll hear from us too, particularly about classroom visits and shifting to a focus on instructional practices from a focus on our curriculum materials. But yeah, we've got three goals and in the interest of keeping it brief, without further ado, I'll pass it over to Tiffany.
Perfect. I mean, Brian summed it up really well. There's a lot of themes going across all levels right now. So for quality teaching, no surprise, elementary is also focusing on instructional practices. Looking back at our school improvement plans from the last couple of years, this goal was focused very much around the shift to science of reading from what we've been doing before in literacy. And we've decided to expand that now, rather than just focusing on literacy and foundational skills, thinking about the instructional practices that apply to both literacy and math, so really going cross-curricular with this. I can't remember if I've said it at school committee, but I know I've said it in other places. If there were one curriculum that was going to be perfect for everybody, everybody'd be using it and all students would be successful, it's really about the practices that teachers do in the classroom that make this for students. So we really want to focus on, we have it linked in our plan, I'm not going to read you the eight high-leverage instructional practices, but you can see those in there. And the curricula that we have for both math and literacy incorporate a lot of those practices. So in fact, our ILTs are all actually meeting all together tomorrow to start to dig in and find those connections, to find those places where teachers can really take those instructional practices and bring them to life in the classroom. And just like secondary, we're looking to get the curriculum visits happening, we want to get people into other classrooms, we want to connect teachers so that we're really sharing those strong practices with each other. Let me call turn door to Matt.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you. So we've landed on some strong curriculum and I feel like now we're at the, the point where we're really focused on the implementation side of it. So with that, you know, it is the instructional practices as they, as they've been mentioning, but it's also like looking at the student data and then from there, making kind of informed decisions about like how we group students down the line and use the resources that we've been provided. Really kind of, this goal is really about like the alignment, collaboration, common PD experiences and then getting into classrooms to see kind of the day-to-day piece of, of what our work kind of looks like, obviously with the most important people, our students, right? So for us, it's, it's about kind of, you know, working with our curriculum coordinators, working with our assistant principals. And then from there, it's about like making sure that like all of the key players, so like you think about like your classroom teachers, you think about your special education teachers, you think about your ML teachers, even, even our paraprofessionals that are working with students, right? You think of all of these people coming together and making sure that students have, you know, common experiences, making sure that entry points are there for all students to kind of get into these curriculum resources that we've vetted quite heavily and well and discussed a lot and just making sure that they are leading to the outcomes that, that are intended. So for us, that's kind of really the workaround kind of this goal, which links to like kind of teaching all students and making sure that the curriculum that we have in place is really getting the results we're hoping for and then listening to feedback from all of, all the stakeholders around us.
So our third goal, individualized student learning, is looking to refine our multi-tiered system of supports or MTSS structure to better inform both intervention and acceleration planning for teachers to best support students. We've been working as a team. One of the things that we're so proud of is the collaboration that we have amongst the four elementary schools and with our curriculum leadership structure and in order to look at data, to understand what that information is telling us, how best to support students. One of the things that we're also looking at is refining our data team structure and how we're engaging with data, with staff. In the past, it's been after school or, you know, during PD time, you know, really we're looking to kind of lock it into the school day. So we're working as a team to see how we can identify times of the school day where each grade level separately can come together to look at data with curriculum leadership, our STEM coordinator, our humanities coordinator, our reading specialist, the intervention team, along with administration and each other, to look at how students are performing based on the assessment data that we have and then determine how best to support students and what actions can be done in the classroom during our what I need block to best support students during that time. Meg and Amy had talked a little bit about Open Architects, we're super excited about, which I know you all have dug into a little bit, but Open Architects is going to allow us to streamline this data and make it more usable for not only administrative staff, but also our grade-level teachers. So we can see once students are taking these assessments, whether it be I-ready or DIBELS or other forms, it's going to populate it to one area that's going to allow us to dig deeper where before we'd have to create these web, these, you know, Google Sheets and all these other things. It's going to really consolidate and take that time to allow us to dig deeper and look at students and peel back layers and see how we can support them. We also are looking to, along with our ILTs, talk about with the instructional practices as well as how best to support students and what practices, what interventions, both for students that need support, for also students that need acceleration, how best to do that and really relying on each other as resources. Questions?
Any questions or comments? Um, Alex.
How's it going? I just wanted to, you talked about adopting and you, you mentioned a little bit about finding the time, right? A consistent SST kind of process. Was, when you say creating a consistent process, was it just about consistently scheduling it on the regular or just the process itself and how teachers refer students to the SST team, right? So you can look at the students individually? Was there more to it and was it, we're talking consistent like across the district and so that you guys are all on the same page? And if that was the case and it wasn't just scheduling, what do you guys, what, what did you see as lacking from the process previously?
So I think first, there, you know, prior to this iteration of, of administrative team, there wasn't always a consistent kind of model. I think each school kind of did things and kind of silos and, and not alike, a lot of things that a lot of districts have dealt with, right? Where, you know, what works for this specific school, how they can operate is how they operate and each school's kind of left in their own. We've. We've worked really hard collaboratively to talk about what works and what doesn't. One of the obstacles in the past, specifically for the larger schools, was trying to find a way to build time in and find coverage for teachers to allow them to meet and talk about students that they have concerns about. I think what was also lacking prior to having the data available to us is what data were you using? So if you want to go back, Alex, to the thought, but now not to put down any assessment data sources. But that type of data source was not always a reliable source that could be consistent amongst four schools. Shifting to DIBELS and iReady provides us a much more, you know, accurate and not subjective, for lack of a better, objective data source that allows us to look at not only at individual schools, but across schools. The SST model, I know Brian has worked a lot with, and I'll defer to you because I know you've done a lot of work on this from the district team.
Yeah, so we think we have the bones of a process at Walton that would work well across the schools. And I've shared some resources with the principals, just like documents that articulate when it's appropriate to refer a student to SST for support. Information about who should be involved in those meetings, which types of support, teachers and whatnot. And like TJ just mentioned, I'm hoping that the secret sauce to this eventually will be the incorporation of the Open Architects data that we have. And using those really objective points, using them all together, looking at attendance data simultaneously with achievement data and lots of other data points to really make good decisions about what to try to help kids make progress. So the hope is that by the end of this year, we'll all use that consistent process and I'm sure continue to tweak it and improve it, but that's kind of the crux of the goal.
I would also add in, and secondary references as well, and we do have it in our plan as well, the D cap, the district curriculum accommodation plan. Having that in place and really starting to dig into it and thinking about what are the things teachers have tried? So if you're bringing up a student and you have concerns about, what have you already tried? Have you tried these practices that are already outlined in the D cap? And being able to have those common conversations, I think that was another piece that was missing besides the more objective data.
And Brian's actually being modest. He actually has created much more than a bones process in this. And what he shared with us was way more developed.
There are many documents.
Than what we had. And I actually am looking forward to implementing it with our team. And it is going to create, it's just a better system than what we've had in the past. So the idea that it was created in-house, but now that it's shared amongst us, I think is a really powerful thing.
I think that's great too, because the crux of individualized student learning is generally looking at each student, and we're doing that through the SST process. And the document that you talked about, just briefly, was the MTSS, like the explanation document? Is that just like a mapping of different tiered supports? That maybe you can then relate to with the D cap, whatever else, the way you're putting that in that you can share with the teams during SST?
So we would have linked it here, but it's outdated, to be honest. I haven't done a good job of keeping up with it. But yes, it's basically a map on the vertical access, like tier one, two, three, and then horizontal access, practices, resources. And then like an articulation of that process, when a student doesn't make good progress, what should you try first, then when should you refer to this group? So yeah, it's like a one-page document that attempts to summarize that entire process in all the areas. Math, literacy, social-emotional.
And just one last, I promise, one last question. Within Open Architects, which is a great tool, you can have them design whatever you want for. You can even look at interventions, specific intervention groups, and track that attendance data. And with that, you mentioned social-emotional learning, right? And social-emotional learning. And do you currently have what we have within the elementary schools, middle school, high school? Something that is like a data source for social-emotional learning that could also be added into, like let's say, a student profile in Open Architects that would really add to the individualized student learning?
It's a great, great question. I think Tiffany and I have talked a little bit about something I had tried to use as a data source for that. But it didn't work out that well, to be honest.
But it's going to work this time.
I agree with it. It's going to be 10 times better. But basically, trying to get teachers to summarize where students struggled with certain social skills and then sort of give ideas to the next teacher about how to support them, what worked well in their classroom. But I mean, I guess my answer is we don't. I don't think we do at the moment.
We branched into this a little bit at Woodville. We had a little bit of time with our counseling team. So we've implemented some in-class supports over a series of weeks. And looking at it kind of as like a tier-one in-class kind of support. And then from there, if there's students that maybe need additional support, those students would then break out into a smaller, individualized counseling group. So we are looking at targeting pieces. It's not every classroom. And it's not through a designed curriculum necessarily. But it is something that we're looking, it's data we're looking to collect and get to our youngest students. Because what we were finding is students would enter into, let's say, Woodville, and they would have access to counseling very early on. And they would have access to counseling during their entire elementary career, which is fine, right? Some students need that, but not necessarily all students need that, right? So we're trying to create a process where we identify kind of early. And then from there, give some strategies or resources to those students that maybe need it the most in our younger grades and see if that brings some of the workload down for our counseling team. Because those resources are really precious. And the students that are in that space and need that space, we definitely want to make sure people are available to help them and not just maybe a student that has just been there for the duration of their elementary career and it's more of a comfort as opposed to a need, if that makes sense.
One other addition, I just remembered. I believe all four of our schools do administer a fourth-grade depression and anxiety screener. I don't think that would end up on Open Architects, but that is a data point that we use to sort of screen if a student might be at risk for those challenges and then try to proactively support them.
Yeah, and it's, you know, you can develop a number of different things. There's a number of different companies out there that offer, like Wayfinder or Panorama and some of these other things. But you can, I'm just thinking, just as we're talking about it, you kind of develop something from the CASL frameworks, right? And do a survey, get the input from the students, some of those key points, whether it's through CASL or through the VOCAL survey, question center around that. You get a lot of great information that you can then possibly link in there and give you a full picture. I'm just thinking out loud with you guys as you're talking about the SST teams.
I mean, the VOCAL could end up on Open Architects for sure.
Thank you.
Always. Thank you.
It's a good point, just with that idea of backing up the academic data with maybe some more context of what could be going on.
Qualitative data around climate, really kind of getting informed in conversations.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone.
So just comments and updates for our viewing audience, if you haven't been able to figure out.
Oh, that's nice.
Love that.
Gotta take this chair. Thank you so much. So just for background, for our viewing audience, Alex, our new school committee member, is a school administrator. And SST is the Student Support Team or the Student Success Team. It is a collaborative group that really looks at how students are progressing. And really, they dig in on what data is accessible for groups or collaborative teams, especially at elementary and middle, to really look at how students are progressing. What might be barriers to their progress and also how we might be challenging our most advanced learners. So there's kind of an arc to this. But I hope that a takeaway for the committee and for our viewing audience, and what you're going to hear more about, is just that we have the technical aspects, so much of the technical work in place to really start to make this progress with instruction, right? And what is most critical is what's happening in the classrooms, right? And Kevin started off with this point earlier. PD is instruction with teachers teaching other teachers, right? There's nothing like that. So we're going to be talking more about this. We're going to be talking more about Open Architects and our data dashboard. We're going to be talking more about the vocal data, about climate and culture. And so those will be forthcoming for upcoming topics or forthcoming in. And so those will be on future agendas. And then we can talk more about it and I'll take any feedback maybe at the end or if something comes across, any of the committee members, they want to reach out and kind of think about what we might need to include on future agenda items. Kevin and I have been talking more and more about what are the best ways for us to talk about and to demonstrate and to communicate student outcomes. What does that mean, right? And so, is that fair? Okay, I don't want to go too far down that road, but that's just a quick update in that space. Just several comments and updates, and then I need to kind of close with some serious comments that we notified the community about today. But just, you know, just comments and updates. So last week, September 4th, we had a safety meeting with our construction team. We had all members of this construction team there. We had our project management group there. Facilities, police were there, DPW, Kevin Gill was there. We met over at the Bond trailer with myself and Tim O'Brien. And we talked about safety while students are coming back to school and what are the things we did last year that we might be able to replicate again this year? One of the things that we talked about was speed tables. If you remember, last year, we had speed tables, they call them, or speed bumps on Farm and on, oh my goodness.
Hemlock?
Yes, on Hemlock Road. And so this year, and kind of just reviewing how that went last year, this year, the team has decided to just put speed tables on Hemlock, right? I'm a fan of them on Farm, but I'm in the minority here. And so we just talked about how best to support people and remind people that school is back in session and you just have to drive safely and slowly. I know everybody's in a hurry. Everyone's trying to get to school. Often, kids are late or parents are running behind. But just please take the extra moment just to let people cross, let people get where they're going and kind of take turns. And we need to be our best selves in those places. A reminder, we had a few issues last year. We had an accident coming out of the construction lot with one of our construction workers. Got hit by someone coming down the hill. And so that was a little scary. We also had a student, excuse me, not a student, a person on a bicycle that was hit and injured pretty seriously as well. So we talked about, in the safety meeting, we talked about speed tables. We talked about crossing guard. So we do have a crossing guard that's at the base of Hemlock and Farm, which we feel like is critical. We also talked with our town engineer. Then Bill is now also in charge and responsible for parking and working with the police on this. We talked about flashing beacons or possibly increasing the signage there. We're still kind of trying to figure out the resources. PBC had some creative feedback there that we're kind of trying to work on. But we're going to try to talk about that more in our next meeting, okay? Other items that are kind of happening, and so.
Can I just pause you right there just as we're talking about this? Because I was just watching town council last night. And they just approved the easement of moving a telephone pole. But I think it might have been in relation to straightening the road, Hemlock into the hunt. Do we know an approximate window in the school year when that's going to impact sort of the campus, for lack of a better term?
The telephone pole or the straightening of the road?
The straightening of the road. That work on the street, I imagine, is going to be very impactful.
Right.
Is it going to be this year?
I can, Tim O'Brien will be at our next meeting. Giving an update on construction and what we're doing. We should have some more information then. So you say straightening, I say maybe bending, because we're actually aligning Hemlock to the other intersection, which will also be a traffic circle.
Yes.
So I think we should be able to provide more information either at the next meeting or it might even be helpful to have our architects and to our project management group to talk more about this, right? Have another voice other than Tim.
I just wasn't sure it was part of your conversation with the others.
It was not at this time. Yeah, it was not. So that meeting occurred last week. We're continuing to work on that. We're also going to be working with the VOKE on student parking as well. So there are several parking spots, I think over 100 parking spots for construction at the pit. And so, but right now, early in the year, I think that there's some availability for parking on the street. So we have some construction workers parking on the street along with students. Students are being displaced. So we're trying to figure out how to best kind of address that. Chief Scory had some very good ideas there, but more information will be forthcoming there. So that's just a quick update on safety and managing the high school and Woodville campus, Farm Street. And that's where we're happy to answer any other questions at this point. So just other items, this morning, we had some of the superintendents in the Middlesex League and the chiefs of police and fire met with DA Marion Ryan to talk about things that are happening across the country and what we're doing to keep students safe. We talked a little bit about cell phones and how challenging cell phones can be for students. And I feel like we talked about cell phones in our last meeting and might be ahead of that curve or ahead of that work that's happening at the State House. So there'll be more forthcoming there. We heard a bit this week about some changes that they're making to the law around bullying and what that might look like, which it may impact our policy work that we're doing. And I'm looking at Melissa because she's chair of policy. And so there'll be more information forthcoming on that. But we just want to keep everyone informed there. So other news, we have, enrollment is up. So last year, we ended the, our October 1 was about 3380. We're at about 3460 right now. And so that's positive. So we're getting closer to our 3500 number, which we had a few years ago, pre-COVID. And those are standard things that I think are important to note. Also, we missed an opportunity earlier when we were talking about new faculty and staff. We also welcome Joe Lyons, no relation, right? My son's name is Joe Lyons, but no relation. Joe Lyons is our new SRO, Wakefield PD. He's our new SRO at the high school, and he has just hit the ground running. He is at training this week, but we are also having a number of items going with Kelly Tobine in his absence. And so there'll be more information forthcoming there. I also want to keep the committee up to date. Principal McLeod sent out a note to the high school faculty and staff. And I sent out a note to the community. And you all should have been copying. I'm sorry if you did not, were not copied or did not receive this. You will receive it this evening if you haven't gotten it already. But I want to let you all know that there was a swastika that was identified earlier today written on a student desk in a very, very small space. It's probably one inch, kind of one-inch square. These incidents of hate and intolerance are just flat-out just unacceptable, right? They're just unacceptable. And we really need to figure out more about this. And so as we learn more and we can report more, we will be getting another statement out or an update out, both from Principal McLeod and myself. The police have been notified about this. We are, the police have been notified about this. And it's, it's also, there's also been kind of a reissuance of curriculum around hate, hate speech, intolerance. And it intersects with our history and social science kind of principle too, around antisemitism, hate and, and prejudice. And so there's, there's kind of a lot of layers to this. Things need to happen in the classroom. Things need to happen in regard to how we're supporting students, but we also need to be clear about what is absolutely, you know, flat out just inappropriate and unacceptable, right? And to be honest, this, this, you know, it could lead to a criminal situation, but that is not, that's for us to work with the police on at this point, right? So there'll be more information forthcoming on this. Happy to answer any questions that anyone has at this point in time. I'm sorry that I have to end the meeting like this, but.
I'll ask a question on a different topic. The, one of the things, when Ms. Curran was here, we talked about being able to promote from within. And I had heard about a, a teacher who was promoted from within at Dahlberg. And I only heard it through the grapevine. And I think it'd be great for the community to hear about those teachers who are moving up in, you know, taking on new roles inside of the school system.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I don't know if we can get an update in a future meeting because I don't want to just mention one who is one of my favorite teachers ever, who took on a new role at Dahlberg, without mentioning all of the other teachers in the district who maybe took on some new role.
Yeah, that's a, it's a great point, Pete. And I was going to say something about this earlier. I didn't want to kind of pile on and on with all of the new teacher kind of.
And that's why I didn't bring it up when they were here.
All the reporting, but, but you're right. Several of the, the moves or that we've had, you know, we had a library media specialist retire and has, has not retired yet. There's, we've created some overlaps. We have a first grade teacher, Courtney Leahy.
One of my favorite teachers.
She is a rock star. She is just, she makes the weather for kids and, and adults, but is now going to be a library media specialist and will not just impact a classroom of 25 kids or 24 kids. She will be working in the library media center for the entire school. So, but what that did is that allowed a third grade teacher, Jane Dotromont, to go from third grade to first grade, which I know she's very excited about, which opened up the new third grade spot for the teacher that we, we met this evening. And so we have a few of those situations, like Levia, you know, you heard about that earlier. You know, her leaving the high school or going to the middle school is a little bit of a, I think, a little angst, right? But then we had someone transfer, Kyle Collins, Stonehill grad, moves from the middle school to the high school. So it's a, you know, just a really, some, some just nice movement. And I think people looking to be where they would see themselves, right? And sometimes those changes are just so wonderful. I mean, as, as, and a perfect example of this is, you know, both Erin, as, as well as our, our new AP.
Just keep taking from my team.
Yeah. Kara, so just keep taking from my team.
It's good for the district.
But yeah.
Yes, I'd love to just make sure in the future we, we find an opportunity to, to talk about those staff members. Because I, I think it's great that we can promote, we're promoting from within the district. We're giving staff an opportunity to find other roles that are of interest to them. And I think it's great for the, you know, I only heard about the Dahlberg, you know, through the rumor mill.
Yeah.
I think it's great for the community to hear about this.
You would never know it just looking at the list of new teachers. The question is, where did everybody go? You know, yeah.
And so some of the stuff happens in August, right? Yeah.
Yeah. And so, and some of it happens over a, a three-year period, you know? So we could certainly provide more information there, Pete. I'm glad you asked the question. Thank you. Other questions? That's it from, from us. We appreciate the time.
All right, thank you very much. I just have four quick comments. First, I know we talked, I know I talked a lot, the last school committee meeting about the excitement of the beginning of the school year. Well, now like it's actually started and, you know, last week was first week of school, you know, you know, kids are learning routines, you know, meeting their teachers. And now we're kind of hitting the ground running. And it's always exciting in September and October, like where the energy is really high for our students and our teachers. So, you know, just, yeah, just looking forward to a really great beginning of the school year. It's a, you know, it's like, this is really where the energy really is, you know, all the optimism is right now. It's really, really good time to, you know, hit the ground running. My second comment, you know, Porch Fest obviously is this great community event in the town of Wakefield. So it's, it might, it might seem a little weird for me to bring it up at school committee, but I think that there is a connection. Like there's no accident that you have a ton of students and kids that were performing in the musical acts around town. And I think that, you know, when you see all these, not just the adults that obviously put all the work and time into setting up Porch Fest and performing in the event, we also have these, a lot of, you know, our students and our children that are also not just watching and walking around and listening, but are actually performing. So I think that speaks about the music program in, in Wakefield. And so I think that there's no accident, you know, that, you know, Porch Fest is such a successful event, but I think it is actually, I'm not saying, oh, it's the school system that did it. It would've, it would've happened without the school system. But I think that, looking at all the student performances, I think that there is a connection there. So yeah, it's a great, great event, one of the really good, you know, town events that we have over the course of the year. Third item, Town Day is September 27th from 1 to 4. So I'm going to ask, through text, I'm going to ask everyone on the school committee if anyone can volunteer some time. Usually we try to get one or two of us to, you know, to man a booth and man a table. So I'll, I'll reach out to everybody and see. My, my kids' basketball schedule doesn't come out till, I think, this weekend, so hopefully it's not on there, but we'll, we'll, we'll make it work to hopefully set it up. And then last but not least, our next school committee meeting is on Thursday, September 25th. But it turns out there is a scheduling conflict because back to school night at the high school, correct? So we're going to work on that really, really this week and we're going to get that revised date out as soon as possible so the community can know. So, all right. And that is it for my comments. Next item on the agenda is the subcommittee reports. Finance and facilities. Mr. Markham is not present. Was there any, has there been a meeting since?
There hasn't, but we had, I think we have four meetings on the calendar and I think the first one is coming up.
Friday morning at 8:00.
Okay.
Okay. Great, thank you. Labor and personnel.
Labor and personnel hasn't met yet, but now that the school year started, I was chatting with Dr. Lyons earlier. So we anticipate that we'll be being pulled together. We'll be reaching out soon to the WEA about initiating some conversations around a couple of the matters that we'll be bargaining this year with. So I envision that we'll be meeting fairly soon.
Okay. Great. Student services.
Yep. So we met last Friday. It was a good, good, good meeting. Talked about a few different things to piggyback off what Kevin just said. One thing we had talked about was an update on sort of where we were in the process of the late start sort of work, where we had left where the recommendation from the previous student services committee was to the administration and what we voted on for late start time. So we got a rundown of that from Dr. Lyons. In that conversation, it would, we had thought that maybe the oversight of that work would move from student services into the labor subcommittee so that you could begin the work sort of talking with the WEA about trying to sort of implement that late start for next school year. So sort of with the larger, if anyone was against it or just bring it to the logic committee if you don't mind, and take on that additional work.
That sounds good.
Okay. Secondly, one thing that we had ended last year in student services talking about was that we felt we needed to maybe try and work to liaise a little bit better with the CPAC. There's a lot of sort of collaborative work, a lot of similar agendas between us and them. And so I think we were hoping to just sort of have a conversation, invite them to a few more of our meetings and just see where we could just deepen that partnership. And, and Alex, who sits as CPAC liaison, was a great sort of person to go and sort of start that conversation and, and I think, yeah, I don't know if you want to give an update on that kind of.
Oh, a meeting tomorrow. I think we have a CPAC meeting tomorrow.
Okay. And so we can talk about that in our next student services meeting and see how that goes. Lastly, we talked a little bit about the, this year's youth risk behavior survey that's going to be upcoming. We had a few people from the public join us for public comment and also some ongoing comments during the meeting. Ms. Julie Scott and Mr. Scott McCully joined us by text. And then there was another person from up there, but they really didn't comment. And we just kind of talked about the, sort of where the, the survey comes from, how it's administered, you know, thoughts about it. The commit, the community members would have had some questions around, questions within the survey that they may have thought were explicit or did we need it? Did it, did it align with where we were as a community? Some, some interesting questions. But what became obvious during that conversation is that there are some in the community that do still have questions about the survey. It's been going on, I think, since 1991, but there are some folks that still have some questions. And so we started sort of talking about, maybe we would like to have discussions with some of the other stakeholders, some of the other users of this data that find this data useful. And that's folks from the, the health department, perhaps the youth action team, some people that sort of rely on some of this data to, to sort of help our students and help our, the youth of our community. And see, to target sort of methods and, and solutions for some of these risk behaviors. So I think there was some, some appetite for that in the subcommittee. So I think what, what we had talked about was if we thought, we're going to talk about the youth risk behavior survey again in the larger committee regardless. And so we were just thinking, should we talk to the health department and maybe even youth action in our subcommittee and then sort of report back? Or if it, you know, was sort of a larger committee discussion?
Yeah. Yeah, so like generally in a larger school committee, we always present the results of the youth risk behavior survey.
Correct.
Do you think that it would make sense to meet with the other stakeholders, whether it's here or within student services, before the results are presented to get, to get feedback on what they think?
To, to be honest, they usually present the results. So it's, it's.
Oh, you mean here?
Right.
Yeah.
Previously, like, you know, Catherine Dingra would come up and sort of speak to us about what the results of the youth risk behavior survey. And then, and then we see it in other places. It sort of spills out in the work of the youth action team and stuff. That's why I say it's, it's a long, in those places. So maybe it would be sort of extra to have them present sort of here twice. So if that's, if that's sort of how you're seeing it, that sort of they read out the results, maybe we can have that conversation in our subcommittee and then sort of report out. And then in that way, any members from the community that, that wanted to hear that impact or sort of see that can either see it in the minutes or could join us in the subcommittee meeting. Unless anybody in the larger committee would rather us have that conversation here.
I don't think it makes any difference. I mean, if we have questions or like, we would just ask it when they're here, just like we did when Catherine presented the data previously. And is, is it Liz Parsons who will do it?
It is.
Okay.
It is, yep.
So she will do that with Michael Murphy.
Okay.
And, and one of the things we were talking about in, in the subcommittee was just the idea of just being kind of a sounding board for them because there is some, they're not just presenting the results now. Now there's some other kind of questions about the survey that I think also need to be addressed in addition to the results.
Right.
Right? And so I, I think that's, that was the, kind of the parallel that I think, I think Steven was referred to. Is that fair, Steven?
Fair.
I mean, maybe the question for that is, you know, we've been told in the past there was some group that helped write the survey questions. I don't know what type of access we have to them where they could better explain. The, the, a bunch of the questions came, we were told about, I forget the name of the group, but they helped write the questions. I don't know if, if we have access to them to come and talk about why they chose to formulate questions in a certain way. Because I think it would help to hear, I mean, they ask questions in a certain way and we were told previously by Catherine because through their experience and expertise, this is how they learned and got honest answers from, from students to help identify these areas that needed action. And I think, you know, the, the benefit of that would be it's, you're not getting it third person, you're getting it directly from the source of, of people who are experts in this area and why they came up with those types of questions. I don't know if we have access to them as part of our whatever, you know, survey, but.
Yeah, they're, they're research consultants. It's the JSI group.
That's the most thing.
And so they're research consultants, so I, I mean, I don't.
It doesn't hurt to email.
I mean, they'll, they'll have the, the process and how they, how they set up the, the questions and how they field the survey as part of the, the survey. Like that's like standard reporting. Yeah, that's, I mean, we can talk, we can obviously talk about it. I don't know that we need specialists to come in and, and, and talk about it. And I, and honestly, my, my takeaway was really, moving forward, it's, it's really helpful for the community to understand how the data is impacting activities and how those activities are impacting students.
Yeah.
Or the general community, because in some, in some cases, it's not just our students.
Yeah. So I've, I've always felt that from Catherine, she did a great job explaining what we do with the data and how we use it in a positive way and the importance of the data, that if we don't have the data, we don't get funding. I think what maybe some other people don't understand is why questions have to be asked in certain ways that they may not like the way they're asked. And that was the only reason, like, it's hard for that to come in a piece of text versus an expert who helped write these questions and modify them over decades would help explain why they, they, they chose that. I mean, maybe I'm opening up Pandora's box and it's a complete waste of time. I'm just saying, like, we hear a lot about the usefulness of the data and how it's used. I, I just think the concern from the community is not, oh, this is great, useful stuff and we're doing positive things. The, you know, the folks that gave you feedback, I assume it's more just, oh, why did they word a question in, in this way? No?
No, it was, it was, why are we, why are we asking these questions and to, to what end?
Okay. Because I feel like we get those, we're, we're told that every single time we get the results, why we ask the question.
Yeah, and I think the, I think beyond the question of like why they phrase questions in a certain way, which is really getting into the weeds of like the statistics and like why, like the collection of the data. I, I think that, you know, I think that would be important or useful, you know, to kind of have a brief, just historical context of like what the whole point of the survey is, you know, like when the presentation's made, like whether one of us or the board of health or whoever just says, listen, this, you know, this survey's been, it wasn't invented five years ago. Like this survey's been going on for a while and it was invented for a reason. And we can say what the, you know, reason was. And I, and I think that would be a good, you know, a good thing to do to really try to, you know, flesh, flesh some of this out. So, okay. All right. Thank you.
More to follow.
Thank you very much. Policy and communications.
We have not met. We, we have continued updates every week about things, so we are managing the updates and trying to, to get a meeting on the books to actually take the updates and actually move them through into the policy book. So that's where we're at.
Okay.
Melissa, how many more books do we have left to go through before we'll be able to finally get over to the IISC site? Because I know their, their update was we needed to complete the process before we could migrate.
I can think of at least five, but there may be more. We did six last year though, so we're.
So we may be done this year.
We might be done this year. Might happen.
Maybe. Thank you. Thanks, Melissa. Are there any liaison reports?
The youth council met for their orientation today, but they have not had an official meeting other than that orientation today. So I'm hoping to, to hear more about what they're doing. Last year they were able to, to be at Town Day, so I'm hoping we can see them at Town Day as well.
Great. Thank you. Any other liaisons, meetings?
ESC celebrated another year. They kicked off the food rescue program at, I believe, the Greenwood and the Waltons or, I think. But we have a meeting tomorrow night, so get caught up on, on what they have going on and want to report back in our next meeting.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else? All right. So as we, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to, we, we heard about the, the football team playing at, at Fenway for Thanksgiving. I just wanted to get anyone who's, who's interested in seeing our choral, our high school choral group is going to be performing the National Anthem at the Red Sox game on the 18th. So there's still tickets available if anyone wants to try and see the Wakefield Choral Group sing the National Anthem at Fenway.
All right. September 18th?
September 18th, 1 o'clock start.
Great, thank you. All right. Like I said before, our next school committee meeting is not going to be on Thursday, September 25th, but we are going to work out when that is. Are there any additional school committee comments? Mr. Prescott?
Just real quick, three things. Just want to welcome everyone back. We didn't meet before the school year started, but got to hear from Doug a little bit and some of those, that it's been a great start. So it's great to be back at things. Number two, I just want to come in, I love having the new teachers come in. I think it's such a nice thing. I don't, not exactly sure when it started, but I really, really enjoy kind of having an opportunity to kind of learn a little bit more about them, for them to be introduced. So I think it's really great. So I'm glad that, that that's remained. And then lastly, I think it was Steven and, what's his name?
Pete.
Pete. I think it's Steven and Pete, sorry. It's been a long day. It's the start of the school year for me, too. Posted on their social media sites, the video that the high school had created about the, it was so well done. I know Mr. Barris and Mr. Constantine worked on that. And then the text, everything about it was so good. I was forwarding it to as many alums as I knew, and people were responding, oh, I remember that hallway, you know, they don't get to walk through like I do, so, and I remember that. Or there was a couple of shots, maybe because it was John, that done, done it, of classmates of mine and some of the old pictures that they had shown. It was just such a great, well-produced video. It was really emotional. It was really nice seeing. So if you haven't seen it.
Amy can do radio.
I know. It was so well done. It's, I keep saying, and so any of their social media sites or is on the Wakefield community sites, it's worth watching. It was so well done if you haven't seen it. So thanks to everyone who put that together and especially those that shared it. I appreciated having a chance to see it. That's all.